All right, everybody. Thank you for coming and welcome. This is the Utah Statesman Logan City Candidate Town Hall Meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming live. We are also streaming online at youtube.com/USCStatesmen and on Aggie Radio 92.3 KBLU LP Logan. Today's Town Hall is going to begin with our city council candidates. We will then move on to our mayor candidates. The outline of this Town Hall will be as follows. Each member or each candidate will have a two-minute introduction and then we will ask the questions. The questions were provided by Utah Statesman journalists as well as members of the Government Relations Council and from our following on Instagram. We will begin with our city council. Each city council member will have two minutes to introduce themselves. We will then have four questions with two-minute responses for each candidate. Candidates will introduce themselves and answer questions in the order by their ballot position and we will alternate who begins answering questions. So we will begin with our introductions after we have introduced our moderator board. My name is Darcy Ritchie. I am the managing editor of the Utah Statesman.
I am J.C. Caldwell and I am the news manager of the Utah Statesman.
And I'm Dexter Lake.
Awesome. So let's get started. We will be first introduced to Amy Z. Anderson.
Good afternoon, everybody. I've been watching Netflix to take a break lately. Are we okay here? It's my magnetic personality, that's what I'm gonna say. So I'll start over. So I've been watching Netflix lately to take a break and I've gotten hooked on a show called Maid. I don't know if any of you have watched that, but it's the story of a 25-year-old woman who leaves with her two-year-old daughter an abusive marriage. During an episode, she asked why she is present when attending a group meeting. The crux of her answer is she's trying to figure out how she got here. A single mom, no education, on seven public assistance programs with the dream of writing. And it may not make sense to you why I'm sharing this because although Maid is fictional, Alex's story does help explain why I am here. Here running for office, here in the volunteer and work positions I've held, and here valuing all that I have. No, I have never been a 25-year-old, single mom, in an abusive relationship. I was fortunate to be raised by a great family of modest means. I was fortunate to attend a great university on scholarships. I was fortunate to find great part-time and not-so-great part-time work, including being a maid, to help afford it. I was fortunate to create great relationships with my husband, with a strong partnership in marriage, and raise three great human beings. And I'm fortunate to have a great job there. I feel valued each and every day. But I understand acutely that not everybody has the opportunities that I've had. I understand that not everybody has the opportunity to see and address the unmet needs in our community. Volunteering in Logan classrooms, where teachers keep snacks to feed their students who come without breakfast, helped me see those needs. Co-founding the Loaves and Fishes Community Meal, which provides a free meal twice a month, helped me see the needs. Supporting organizations like Common Ground and CAPSA and Cash Community Connections helped me see those needs. Counseling people at the end of their lives in homes from the bench to trailers near their tracks helped me see the needs. Listening to citizens and business owners and students and city staff helps me continue to see the needs.
And that's time, Amy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will now be introduced to Keegan Garrity.
Hello, everybody. Is mine on? Can you hear me okay? Okay, cool. There's room in the front if anyone wants to sit down up here. So I actually attended Utah State a few years ago. And yeah, go Aggies. And I would ride the bus to school. I lived over in a basement apartment over kind of up by the cemetery, by Luntstrom Park. And I remember there was an issue on the ballot and that issue was to run the buses every 15 minutes during peak times. And I thought, I'm a student and this would be a really cool thing to have. I see Nate up there. He actually rode the bus with me a couple times, so he can vouch. But I thought, you know what? I'm gonna participate in voting. I'm gonna register. I grew up in Oregon, so my registration was there. And I moved it to Utah so I could do that. And I voted and I thought, yeah, I'm doing my civic duty. And it didn't pass. So I still had to plan my routes, you know, 45 minutes in advance. But I saw how many people voted and it was only about 3,000 in our city of 50,000. And I thought, if 1,000 students would have participated, maybe even less, this could have passed and it affects them. So I know sometimes as a student, it's hard to see like how local stuff affects your life, but it really does. So first off, I would encourage you to go register to vote if you're not already. That's step one. And participate in the process. You know, I think there's a lot our city could do to work with USU. One of the things that I participate in is the USU Gleaning Team. I don't know if you've heard of that, but what they do is they go around to people who have fruit trees where they're not gonna use all their fruit and they come pick it and give it to people who are in need of food. And I think those are great programs and I think there's an opportunity to work with USU and our students even more. So if I'm on council, I'd be excited to continue that work. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Keegan. And finally, we will be introduced to Ernesto Lopez.
Hello, everyone. My name's Ernesto Lopez, as you heard, and I've been on the city council for almost a year, about a year. I got appointed as the first Latino, the first immigrant to serve on the Logan City Council out of a pool of about 15 people that were candidates. And it's been a true pleasure, a privilege to serve our community. In that way, I have 20 or so years of experience serving our community in many different ways. Mostly with cultural awareness programs and youth development. I've been responsible of organizing events, bringing minority students to Utah State University. I've had the pleasure of introducing Noel Coquett, the president, too, also to the community through education programs. And I actually work for USU Extension. I have that wonderful opportunity to do that. Bringing research-based information through programs to the community. Personally, I was 18-years-old when I got recruited to come to Utah State University back in 99. And I've been here since then. Utah State University has been probably the single biggest reasons, one of the single biggest reasons why I've stayed here in Logan. And now that I'm working for Utah State University, I feel like I've accomplished a long-standing dream of giving back to not only this organization, this institution, but to the community itself. I'm a father with two kids and we live happily here in the valley. Some of the priorities that I've outlined for my campaign is to continue to support business development in the city. I feel that we can do more of that, of course. And also to promote civic engagement and that involves you. So I hope that if you're registered to vote, that you do remember to vote. And if you're not registered to vote, please do so. You still have a couple more days to do that.
That's time. Thank you very much. We will now move into the questions. Just a reminder of the format. We have four questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each. We will begin the questioning in the order that the candidates are listed on the ballot, but then we will rotate and alternate who answers first. So we will turn the time over to J.C. or Dexter for our first question.
Perfect. So thank you, candidates. A common question and a common concern among Utah State University students is the issue of parking among Logan City limits and on Logan City streets. So how will you address and fix the issue of parking for students in Logan City? And we will start with Amy.
Parking isn't just an issue for Utah State students. It's an issue for our entire city. I will tell you, I have gained new appreciation for the issue of parking because we are now actually renting just down the street on 1200 East. And I know there's many students who rent in that complex as well and are concerned about when winter comes, what are we gonna do? Because Logan does restrict parking from November until April. One of the things that we have done as a city has been to engage those neighborhoods in conversation along with Utah State to help address some of those questions. There's always gonna be a little bit of a conflict for people who live close to the university and the students who come here just for the day or the students who choose to reside off-campus. And we've worked hard in the Adams neighborhood to bring their neighborhood council together along with Utah State representatives and students to talk and to discuss what might work. I know it can be really frustrating when you are running late and you need a quick place to park and you realize that it's a residential parking zone only. It's always gonna have that little bit of tension. And I hope that with continued communication between the university, between students and through the city, we can find equitable solutions. We need to make sure that we can keep our streets clear so that you do have safe passage on your way to and from campus. But again, I think it's that issue of communication. And, you know, maybe invite us up to an AS-USU meeting for city council and for the city staff to discuss it so that we can brainstorm solutions together.
Thank you. Keegan.
Yeah, so students are here from about August to May. And there's snow from about October to end of March. So pretty much all the street parking is limited during that time. So I'd love to look at an option to not restrict parking entirely, a blanket ban on parking on the street during that whole season. I think there's maybe another way we could do it. For example, if someone parks on the street and it snows, they could get a ticket. They do it again, they get a ticket. Maybe the third time, they get towed, something like that. But I'd love to see that loosened up a little bit. Because if you're here last year, I think it only snowed about six times the whole winter. So it seems too restrictive to not allow parking on the street the whole year. The other thing that I think we could reevaluate is about a month ago, the council approved certain areas of the city to allow for accessory dwelling units or ADUs. These are places where you can live inside of a homeowner's house, for example, a basement apartment, something like that. And I think those are great because they allow people to walk to their destination. But when that was passed, there was a blockout area all around campus. So unfortunately, all the houses around campus, all the way to 16th East, don't allow those ADUs. So the council said they would reevaluate that in 18 months, but I think that could be potentially reevaluated sooner because I think that could be a great option to give students a place to live. Thanks.
Thank you. And now Ernesto.
As they mentioned, I believe we should continue to listen to both the family, the neighborhoods and the people that live in these areas and also listen to the USU student population. Communication will be crucial if we're trying to improve that situation. One of the things that I think we could also promote is incentivize in some way the use of transit, the public buses, so that we can potentially decrease the number of vehicles that are looking for parking. Parking space is a limited resource and unfortunately, we cannot multiply it very easily and it's very expensive to do that.
Awesome. And along with parking, there have been recent issues with housing for students as well, including housing shortages and even bad business practices. How will you hold business owners, landlords, and property managers accountable? And we'll go ahead and start with Keegan this time.
Can you just clarify, hold them accountable for...
For maybe if there are bad practices going on, how would you hold them accountable for those actions?
So, and I'm not sure, because I'm not familiar with what's going on that's bad. But are you talking about like being too restrictive on parking or...
So there's been a couple of issues reported. First of all, with the 800 block not opening in time for students and thousands of students having difficulty finding housing, as well as another recent one was Alpine Flats, who have been changing contracts and raising rent for tenants like every month, things like that. How will you hold the property managers accountable?
Okay, you're talking about like the Ponzi scheme, basically, that happened with students who were promised housing and then didn't get it and there's already a shortage. So I mean, typically, what happens with that is litigation, right? Because there's already laws in place that prevent people from making contracts and breaking them. So as far as enforcement, I think that's probably gonna be more on the judicial side. A council member's gonna be more responsible for legislation. So I think there are things that can be done in terms of rent fairness. And I know the city's already worked on things like that. For example, non-discrimination laws and making sure that landlords are held accountable for certain living standards that are in place. So I think those can continue to exist. The other one that some of you might be familiar with is there's a limitation on how many non-related people can live in a household. And typically, that, you know, there's some questioning about how that's being enforced. But I think that'd be another one, similar to the parking on the street law, that could be looked at again. Because sometimes the housing area can hold capacity and can have room for more than three non-related people. But in such a tight housing market, it seems like that's a little bit too restrictive as well.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Ernesto.
Can you go ahead and repeat the question?
Yeah. So with the recent housing issues that students have experienced, kind of what Darcy said, how will you hold these business owners, landlords, and property managers accountable?
Yeah, housing, I'm assuming this is related also to housing affordability and I just came back from a summit and it's well-known that we have a shortage of units in our entire state. Logan and this area also being one of those. We cannot build units fast enough to supply the demand that we have. And so unfortunately, the market usually dictates this, kind of how to manage this issue. As far as holding people accountable, the city does have limited ways to do that. I do feel that our planning commission, the one that approves a lot of these projects and zoning, has been doing as good of a job as possible. And this is based on my experience so far being on the council. If there is ways that they can improve, I think everybody's more than welcome to feedback on how they can hold people accountable for any wrongdoing that they may be doing.
Thank you. And finally, Amy.
So one of the things that, prior to my being on the council, that was passed several years ago, was this campus residential housing zone, which surrounds Utah State. And I'm not sure if students are aware of that, but there's a stretch up into 600 East that where housing occupancy can be higher. That's why you have those units that can have up to six students in them. That is one way that the city has tried to address the issues of housing availability. It's not necessarily affordability. As these two gentlemen have said, it's really difficult. We can approve projects, but if a contractor is not on the timeline that's appropriate, unfortunately, there's really not much that the city can do as far as that. So legal consequences are in place. Logan City did formerly really push a landlord licensing program. And we backed off on that a few years ago. I think it's probably time to look at that again. We really do need to because with the ADU ordinance that was just recently passed, individuals who want to create an ADU in their home do need to apply for a license for that. So that would be an opportunity for us, again, to look at what might be some opportunities to educate landlords. It was a good landlord program. If they took a course and they passed it, they could have the credential. I think we can do more to encourage landlords to participate in a program like that so students know and understand when they go to look at property, this is a good landlord, as opposed to kind of being at the whim of whether or not, you know, the previous tenants were honest with you about how that landlord operated.
Thank you. All right. Our next question is open-ended and available for how you interpret it. But as a candidate, surely you've received complaints about different issues in Logan City. What are some of those complaints that you've received and how have you or how do you plan to deal with them? And we will start with Ernesto.
Parking is definitely one of those complaints that has come through multiple times. In fact, I've answered questions from students who are trying to come up with ways to improve that situation and they're working on a project of some sort. Recently, when we were discussing the ADU, the accessory dwelling units ordinance, there was a lot of feedback that we got from the community. And we're talking, I don't know, 30, 40 emails that came through, plus a lot more people that showed up at our meetings. Another one that recently came through or that we had a lot of people reach out to was about mask mandates. And so I pride myself actually in being responsive to our constituents. I try to respond within the day if possible and especially if it's directed to me personally. And so I think that's one thing that we can always do better, try to be responsive. And if we don't know the answer to the inquiry, make sure that we're finding out who can respond to those questions.
Thank you. And now we will move on to Amy.
So one of the concerns or complaints that has come to me relatively frequently over the years I've been on the council is one that actually addresses how our community at large handles issues of homelessness. There's that idea that all we do is give people a bus ticket down to Ogden, to a homeless shelter. And so it's a concern to me. It's been a concern to me for a long time. I appreciate hearing from people's stories and incidences that have impacted them because I think that gives us the opportunity to make people aware of it. One way I helped address that is when I was chair, we actually were having a public hearing on the Center Block Project, which brought probably over 100 people to the space. I asked Professor Jess Lucero to come and give her report on homelessness. Because to me, I felt that people were not necessarily there to hear it, but it was the perfect opportunity to make people aware of a problem that existed in our community that they otherwise would not have known about. And it was stunning afterwards to have a number of people come up and say, I had no idea that we actually really did have homeless individuals living in Logan, living in our community. So I've taken it upon myself to get involved with the Homeless Coalition. That's not part of one of the assignments of a city council member. So in hearing that complaint and hearing that concern that we aren't taking care of individuals who are in need here, I've done something proactive to try to bring that, to educate our community and to hopefully find better solutions than giving people a bus ticket out of town.
Thank you. And now Keegan.
Yeah, I think besides the complaint of why don't we have a target, maybe the one that I, and I don't know if that's coming, but one complaint I hear sometimes is, why does it seem like council members seem to come from the same neighborhoods, right? And so, and that does happen. So for example, in the last 13 years, all the candidates, except two, have been elected from the same two neighborhoods. If you break it into the six neighborhoods by elementary schools in Logan. And west of Main Street, where the majority of the population is, there's never been more than one of the five council members that reside west of Main Street. So I looked into why this is and I actually served on a committee where they took one person from each area of the city. And they said, why don't you look into this issue and see what might be causing it? So 13 years ago, we switched the way we elect council members. It used to be a declared seat system and then we changed it to a system where people are just elected from all over the city. And as you can imagine, running a citywide race and knocking 11,000 doors is expensive and it takes a lot of time. So one of the ways I think we can fix this, and the committee that I served on, five of the six of us recommended that the city move towards a district-based system. So we would elect council members by geographic boundaries, similar to the way the state legislature does it, the way the school board does it, the way our county council does it. And it wouldn't necessarily have to be all five seats geographic-based. It could be as little as three. But that's something I'd want to advocate for. And as students, that's something where if you had a geographic area where most of you live, then you could feel like you have a council member that maybe is more beholden to your interests. So that's something I'd like to see.
Awesome. Thank you. And this will be the final question. What makes you qualified to hold this position? And we'll go ahead and start with Amy.
So one of the greatest things I think I bring to the council is my background in mediation and collaboration. I have my degree in communications from college. I have my master's in health administration, so I have finance background from that. But when we moved here to Utah, I actually participated in the mediation certification program down at BYU's Law School. Because to me, ultimately, that's how solutions occur, is when we work together, when we have that ability to listen, when we have that ability to ask good questions. Ultimately, getting to the root of a problem isn't just listening, sometimes it's asking the right question. Often, what people are voicing isn't really what the underlying concern or the underlying problem is. So I think that is one of the skillsets that I bring to council, is that ability to bring a group together, to make everybody feel valued, to give opportunity for people to weigh in. I also think my academic background gives me the ability to do great research, to search for other opportunities and solutions, and bring those back to the group again where we can all reach a compromise and collaborate on a solution. In addition to that, obviously, I think four years on the council, I hope that people have seen that I have that energy and the passion and the dedication. I have flexibility with work, so I can make noon meetings, evening meetings, morning meetings. I'm fortunate to work for an employer who allows for that. So I have the time, the energy, and I will always put in the effort to make sure every voice feels like they're heard and is brought to the table for a solution.
Awesome. And next, we'll go to Keegan.
Yeah, so being qualified to represent people is always an interesting question. I think one of the hard parts about this process for me is that I have to make it about me to get my name out there, but the whole point of being a representative is to make it about you. So it's kind of this contradiction that we've set up. But I'll share some of the things that I think make me qualified. So I work at a company called Malouf. Some of you might be familiar with it. On Glass Door, someone has described it as the Google of Logan. It's a really great place to work. But when I started there, there were about 30 people. And now there's about 1,000 across five states. That's just been in seven years, so it's grown really rapidly. And so we've had to make quick decisions, we've had to collaborate. And I think our city is gonna grow at a similar rate. And so I think we need someone that can be nimble, that can think on their feet. And so I feel like I'm qualified to do that. I also currently serve as the co-chair of the Woodruff Neighborhood. That's the crayon school over off 10th West. That neighborhood, so I serve as the chair, so I've been representing that group for the last couple of years. I served on the board for the school district called the Dual Language Immersion. That's a program that teaches kids different languages, starting from first grade. And so I helped decide how that should be allocated. I've volunteered a lot. I've volunteered with CAPSA and Common Ground. Common Ground's the organization that helps people with disabilities get outside and do fun stuff. I play hockey every week, so I gotta take them to the ice arena and help them skate. So I really try to stay involved. I also serve on the bicycle pedestrian advocacy committee, work with Aggie Blue Bikes a little bit to better allocate the trails and bike paths around town. So, and these are things I'll continue to do regardless of whether I get elected and things I've been doing for a long time. So I really do have a desire to serve our community and will continue to do that.
Awesome. Thanks. And finally, we'll hear from Ernesto.
I love Logan. I love Utah State University. I feel privileged that my family and myself have made a home here in our valley. For those reasons, I feel like I'm very invested in ensuring that we continue to improve the quality of life for everyone here. And I also feel at a point in my life where I'm doing something that I never thought I would do. I never saw myself as being involved in local government. And many times, I've broken stereotypes along my life in service and professionally, received numerous awards. I was a high school valedictorian. I was the first Latino to serve on the city council. And I truly want to inspire people from all across our community to dream big, to see themselves serving in a different capacity that maybe no one else in your family, in your community, has ever done it. So whether you're a member of a minority because of ethnic background or because you're younger or because you're an immigrant, I really wanna inspire people to expand their horizons and to achieve those things that they maybe saw as impossible.
Thank you. We would like to thank all the city council candidates for joining us today. We are now going to start transitioning the stage from the city council Town Hall to our mayor. So thank you again to all the candidates. This town hall will function pretty similar to the last one. Each candidate will be able to give a four-minute introduction. We then have eight questions with two-minute responses for each candidate. Candidates will be introducing themselves in the order they appear on the ballot, but then with the questions, we will alternate who answers first. So we will start with four-minute introductions from each. We will begin with Holly Daines.
Thank you. It is so nice to have the opportunity to be here and visit with you. I am a Utah State graduate, and lots of family members that are graduating here as well. In fact, I did history, my dad was actually a sweet mommy president, and so my husband. So we have deep ties to Utah State University. And I've lived in Logan, you know, most of my life. I'm really thrilled with the opportunity to serve my community, and that was the reason that I went to public office. I've served in many volunteer capacities, including some Utah State University committees prior to running for city council. That was 12 years ago. So I served eight years on the city council, and then was elected to mayor. I'm just finishing my first term.
Sorry, is that better? There. I'm not going to start over, but, so I've served the last 12 years as an elected official, eight years on the city council where I learned a great deal, and I decided, you know, there are things that I could do as mayor that I'd like to see carried out. So I'm finishing the first term and running for reelection. During the last four years, we've accomplished a great deal, and I'm a really hard worker. And we've been really innovative in what we've been able to do, all the while maintaining balanced budgets and reserves in all strategic funds. Some of the things, and no property tax increases. Some of the things we've done, for those of you that may have been around Logan longer, we've cleaned up South Main. It used to be a real mess, kind of coming into the south end of the city. We put in curb and gutter, park strips, trees. We worked with UDOT to get a pedestrian crossing and make that a much better place. Center Street, I don't know how many of you have been down to Center Street to enjoy some of the sidewalk dining there. When I took over, there were crumbling curbs and gutters, the sidewalks were narrow. You know, we had a few interesting businesses that were doing well. So we went to those businesses and said, "Would you like to join us and create a special assessment area and really make Main Street more pedestrian-friendly? A place where you want to go and sit outside and enjoy the beautiful flowers and the sidewalk dining?" So that's been a great success. We have a new library that we are just about ready. We're going to tear down the old one again as part of downtown revitalization and creating the library is really old and needs help. We'll be starting on that probably in February or March. We've come up with a public art master plan to try and create some art around our city. We put together a 47-acre conservation easement along two miles of the Logan River in southwest Logan where we're growing so fast. And we did that, even though it was a million-dollar project, we did it with essentially about $5,000 out of pocket from the city because we were able to obtain a lot of grants. We worked really hard to do that. We just received $4.3 million from UDOT for a pedestrian underpass under Main at 6th South to connect, again, two of our great sections of trail and the overall 17 miles of our trail system. We created some dog parks, which we didn't have before. The golf course is now operating in the black, where it was in the red before. We've done a lot of new infrastructure. Again, we need to replace aging infrastructure to make sure we keep up on that end. So we've also engaged our citizens through the neighborhood councils, and we, you know, we consider USU as one of our neighborhoods. So that's a brief summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. We will now receive an introduction from Dee Jones. Dee, you have four minutes.
Thank you. Hey, happy homecoming. Is everybody ready for Day of Giving tomorrow? All right. Hey, thank you. Thank you to the statesmen for putting this on, I really appreciate the opportunity. Some of the things that I, my goals that I would like to get done if I'm elected mayor is to work on, revitalize our tourism. We, at one time, had a huge tourism campaign going, I want to bring that back because tourism is very important to not only Logan City or Utah State, it's important to the entire valley. I want to bring jobs to the valley, that high-paying jobs, that will keep Utah State graduates here, that will give everyone an opportunity to enjoy what Cache Valley has to offer. I want to get with the other communities in the county to bridge the gap that is between the city and the county and Utah State University. We all need to start working together for a better tomorrow. And I'm going to start making plans, looking 40 years out into the future, where we need to start working on infrastructure now, and we need to get it done now. I'm very happy to be here, and I'm excited to be the mayor of Logan, and I really appreciate you all being here. Go Aggies!
Thank you, Dee. We will now move into our questions. So just a reminder of the format, we have eight questions prepared. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. We will begin the first question in the order determined by ballot position, and then from then on, alternate who answers first. So we will move into the first question.
Yes. And so our first question for you is, "What makes you qualified to hold this position?" And we'll start with Holly.
My experience, again, I mentioned, I served on the city council for eight years, and I've been mayor for four years. Again, for me, being on the city council was like it was job training. I would, I don't think I personally would have jumped into running for mayor without that background experience. But I learned how the departments worked, how the cities work, I understood well how the budget worked, which is the way you get things done, and felt well-qualified to take on the job as mayor, again, after my experience on city council. And the last four years has been, I think, the, you know, the results speak for themselves.
Thank you. Dee?
Well...
The question is, "What makes you qualified to hold this position?"
I have 40 years of marketing and business solution experience. I think it takes a business mind to run a city. A city is a corporation. I come from the corporate world. I was very successful in the corporate world, and it all started right here at Utah State University. Born and raised in Logan, I'm very familiar with the culture, and I'm very familiar with the student culture that goes on here. We're very proud of the fact that we have Utah State University part of Logan, Utah. And I'm really proud of the fact that I was part of it growing up, and I'm proud that I'm have, I'm part of it now. My business background, I'd say qualifies me to be the mayor, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next question. So we asked the city council members this, so with the recent issues with housing and bad business practices, how do you guys plan to hold business owners, landlords, and property managers accountable? And we'll go ahead and start with Dee.
Well, to hold business owners and landlords accountable, we first have to start from the very beginning. I think if a prospective landlord comes to the city requesting a building permit for some apartments, there better be enough parking for those apartments. If there's not, then they don't get the building permit. It seems silly to me to build more apartments than parking spaces. Obviously, the reasons are more money for the landlord, more money in their pockets because they can fit more apartments into a 12-by-12 section than they can a parking, a parking space. But we need to alleviate the parking on streets, and I think that starts with the landlords. What we need to do is get with the city councils, neighborhood councils, and get with them, and get with the landlords where there seems to be an ongoing problem. And we get with them, I'm not really sure about accountability because the accountability needs to start at the very beginning of construction.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Holly.
Accountability would have to be a private matter. I mean, dereference, planning commission, any apartment does have to meet very specific city standards to be approved by planning commission, and that includes parking capacity. But our building inspector, I've had a number of conversations with them. If a private business chooses to overpromise and under-deliver, again, as a city, we can't litigate that. I mean, certainly if someone, I think Keegan mentioned this, I mean, if a student had a contract signed, they could certainly go after them civilly. Again, they have to go through our building inspection process, and that takes time. And I can think of some of the projects you mentioned. Again, our inspectors are not going to sign off on a project just to speed it up if they have not met the safety requirements that they have to meet. So, again, it is a bad management project or problem, but it's unfortunately not something the city can fix. If they are too bad a business, you know, they may go out of business. But it was really unfortunate they didn't open on time. And our building inspector had been telling the supervisor, "There's no way you're going to be done," because they could see the signs advertising fall, you know, residents. So the management chose to make bad decisions. And I understand they now have a new construction, you know, management company, so we hope it gets finished, but we're sorry about that, and it was a rotten deal for those students.
Thank you.
Starting with Holly, what expectations will you have for your council, and how do you plan to hold them accountable?
You know, it's a real partnership, and that's one reason that I think we've all been so successful as a team of accomplishing a great deal the last four years. Because although I, as the mayor, present a budget and run the administration, the city council controls the purse strings, and that is how you get things done. So you have to work with them and make sure you're on the same page and have a shared vision and goals. And, again, they're the ones that get to decide how the money is spent, and I respond to them. And, I mean, any budget adjustment comes to the city council. So we, we track finances very carefully, and with our finance director through our city council, again, we're transparent, our meetings are open to the public. But it's a cooperative process, and we have worked well together, and I intend to continue those relationships.
Thank you. Dee?
I look forward to working with the city council. Constructing criticism is the best road to success. And I look forward to constructing criticism. I don't like to surround myself with yes people. I want to be told that I'm wrong if I am. I want to, I want to hear better ideas. I don't want to throw out an idea and have everyone agree with it. And I think working with the city council that way will take our city progressively forward to where we need to be. I would just once like to, you know, have a committee or a council where there is disagreement, where there is different input, where there are different ideas, not just everyone agreeing on one. And that's the direction I would like to take the Logan City Council. They are very important to the growth of the city. The city council sees a lot of things, they work very hard, and they're out and about a lot, and they hear what the people want to hear, want to say. And that's, they're, they're the voice, they're the voice in the ears of the city.
All right, next question. In communities and states across the nation, there have been calls to, once again, mandate masks and even mandate vaccines. Despite the state's current policy on mandates, do you support masks and vaccine mandates in Logan? And we'll go ahead and start with Dee.
I think vaccines and masks are a personal decision. That's my answer.
All right, Holly.
And one year ago, when COVID first hit, because Utah State at that time had a mask mandate, and our K-12 schools had a mask mandate, I did implement a mask mandate for the city. Again, we were dealing with, you know, kind of the first wave. At this point, I basically have looked to the governor to follow his lead as he tried to advocate and encourage, and, you know, again, the best way to defeat this is to get vaccinated. But again, I'm not in a position to, to pass mandates.
Thank you. And starting with Holly, regardless of the aisle you, regardless of the side of the aisle you belong to, it cannot be denied that there has been increased distrust in government and those in government. Why should Logan City residents trust you as a government official? And explain how you will try to stand out differently than a common politician.
You know, I think, again, the fact that Logan City elections are nonpartisan is a huge benefit to our community. I think we look at the federal level and see the contention, and every issue seems to become partisan. By having Logan City elections nonpartisan, it takes the political side out of things. We simply get things done for our citizens. We pave the roads, we pick up the garbage, we provide great parks and trails. So, again, the fact that we do our business in the public, I mean, you can, my cellphone's on the website. I mean, you can call me, provide a suggestion, again, I answer all emails. You have direct access to your local politicians, and I know that was what was mentioned in the statesman article, some of the articles. This is where it really matters to you, this is where you live, and we do value your input. And, again, I have a four-year track record, and we put all of our information on the website with budgets. Do you know how many people came to our budget hearing for an almost $200 million annual budget for the city, to make a public comment? Zero. But again, so if you choose to come, you can make a difference. And I encourage you to do that because on this level, we do listen to you, and it's important to hear your voice.
Dee?
Read the question.
Absolutely. Regardless of the side of the aisle you belong to, it cannot be denied that there has been increased distrust in government and those in government. Why should Logan City residents trust you as a government official? And explain how you will try to stand out differently than a common politician.
First of all, my track record in the business world speaks for itself. Number two, I truly believe, and I've harped on this many times, even today, community involvement is so important to the success and growth of this city. I will go out into the community, I won't wait for the community to come to me. I'll be out in the community looking for ideas. I want to meet, I would like to meet with all of the neighborhood councils on a monthly basis and keep that going throughout the entire four years. That's where the ideas come from, that's where the concerns come from, and there needs to be more proactive involvement with these people, with the communities, with the neighborhood councils. And I will be out doing that.
Thank you. What are some complaints that y'all have received, and how have you dealt with them or plan to do with them? We'll start with Dee.
Complaints on.
Well, what complaints have you heard of or issues going on in the community that you've received complaints on, and how do you plan to deal with them?
That has been done?
Very vague question, I'm sorry.
It's more like complaints that you have heard, like common complaints, for example, homelessness and parking were some of the things that were brought up by the city council.
All right. We have a huge homeless problem here. There's families living in tents up Logan Canyon. We do not have a homeless shelter, and we need one. The other complaints I've heard was a recent decision to sell the cemetery property to a development firm to build houses and subdivisions and cut roads and cut down green space. And now we're left without another cemetery. Those are the complaints that I've heard just this week. There's a lot of people that have, not necessarily complaints, but they have serious concerns about what's happening with our local government and where the, where the direction is headed from this point forward.
And Holly?
I'll just address that directly. Number one, we have enough space in our current cemetery for about 40 more years, and we do have a housing shortage. So we did opt to sell some of that property above Lundstrom Park for housing. But the other part of that was, we are creating a 30-acre natural park up in that area, and I've met regularly with the neighborhood councils. Just two weeks ago, we had one with the Hillcrest Neighborhood Council and presented the second version of a master plan for a really exciting natural park in that area. So, again, it's going to be a few years before we have the money to actually build it because the first thing you have to do is have a master plan and then determine what the budget will be, and then work towards allocating funds. But, again, we have some great plans for that area, and I think it was a great use of the space. I think one particular concern I had when I was on council, I heard from people, "We love our pets, our dogs, and none of Logan City's parks allow dogs." So because of that, we actually created a year-long pilot program to try some different things. We talked to people on both sides of the issue, those that were afraid of dogs, those that were allergic to dogs, and those that had, you know, needed an off-leash area to exercise their pets. As a result, we now have seven, I think, seven parks in the city that are designated as off-leash dog areas, and then the rest still don't allow dogs, or if there is a trail through it, might allow a leashed dog on a trail. So we were able to listen and solve a problem that really affected a lot of people, and we think keep almost everyone happy. You'll never make everyone happy.
No, once, we've, once you've, it's been fired. Moving on to the next question. What is your greatest fear as a mayor if you were elected? And we'll start with Holly.
My greatest fear as a mayor is an earthquake. We have significant reserves put aside, but if we had a major earthquake like Hitt, Magna, you know, a few years ago, we would be in trouble. One thing we're working on specifically to address that is a new fire station. Our main fire station down- Our main fire station downtown is 50 years old, and it has seismic issues. Again, that, that's an issue that's coming up. Our service center roof, which houses a lot of our public works equipment, also has some seismic issues. We're applying for some FEMA grants to try and fix some of those issues, also allocating, you know, some of our, our funds, our COVID monies that we've received for some infrastructure to try and address that.
Thank you. Dee?
I would, I would go along with what Holly has said. I'm not sure, I'm afraid, but I'm concerned about a natural disaster coming here. We're just not prepared for it. It could be an earthquake or a flood, or a number of different things, but we are not prepared for it, and we've had plenty of time to get prepared for it, and we need to do it now.
Thank you.
What is one of your weaknesses, and how will you use it to your advantage in this position? And we'll go ahead and start with Dee.
Well, my main weakness, weakness is I talk too much. And I just keep elaborating on stuff. Some things I'm so passionate about and I feel so strongly about that I just keep talking and I keep going. That would be my weakness. I have a strong passion for this town, this community, this university, and when somebody walks up to me and starts talking about stuff, I have a tendency to just keep going.
And Holly?
When I get involved in a project and committed, I spend a great deal of time on it, and sometimes, I mean, I work very, very hard, but sometimes that can affect your work-life balance. And so, again, I think it's an advantage to the city that I put in so many hours. Sometimes that can be a disadvantage to me and my family that I maybe should balance that a little better.
Thank you. We will now move into closing statements. Each candidate will be given two minutes to close. We started introductions with Holly, so we will begin closing statements with Dee. Two minutes.
Thank you. Well, I love Logan. I was born and raised here. I love Utah State University. I attended Utah State University. I'm in the Alumni Association Hall of Honor. I'm in Aggie Up, I'm in Aggies Unlimited, and I'm a member of the Ole Main Society. This place is like no other place I've ever been. It's special, and I love it. Logan and Utah State University have given me so much, it's time for me to give back, and I'm very passionate about that. And I love this area, I love the students. This election is about you. We are talking about the future. You people out there are the future of this country, and I look forward to working with everyone out there. This is an awesome place. We need to keep, like I said earlier, the graduating seniors here, where you can start your families here, where you can have your own home, and we can start that now. So that's what I'm looking forward to, is working with these companies that will hire the graduating seniors at a rate of $70,000 or $80,000 a year, keeping them here. And I look forward to working with Utah State, I look forward to working with the city council, and I look forward to working with the community. I'm a very familiar face. You'll see me around, especially up here. I do a lot of work up here every now and then, and I'm very proud to say that I'm a part of Logan and Utah State.
Thank you, Dee. Holly, your closing statement, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Again, I'm thrilled with the opportunity to serve. I served in many volunteer organizations for 20 years before running for public office. And with me, you have a track record. You've seen what we've accomplished the last four years, and I keep my promises. You know, those promises when I ran four years ago were to revitalize downtown, improve aging infrastructure, expand our parks and trails, and work with, revitalize the neighborhood councils, which had kind of fallen out of favor, out of use before I, I took office again. So, again, I keep my promises, I'll work hard. Utah State is a really important part of our community, and we have some great relationships there, and I'll continue to work on those. So, thank you very much. Please consider me when you vote. Again, register to vote, exercise that great opportunity, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We would like to thank all of the candidates for coming and speaking to us today. We would also like to thank the Government Relations Council for working together with us. We would like to remind everyone, the last day to register to vote for this election is on Friday. GRC is doing voter registration today until 2:00, as well as for the rest of the week from noon to 2:00 down over there, close to the Cafe Ibis. So make sure to stop by there. There is still pizza at the front if you would like to grab some. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you again to our candidates.